Good evening. I'm going to call to order the June 25th, 2024 Fountain City Council Agenda. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Mayor Thompson.
Here.
Mayor Protemrick.
Here.
Mayor Hinton, or I'm sorry, Councilmember Hinton.
Here.
Councilmember Applegate. Councilmember Estes.
Here.
Councilmember Hersberg.
Here.
Councilmember Duncan.
Present.
I have six members present, and Councilmember Applegate notified staff of his absence tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Takes us on to item 4.1, Presentations. There are none tonight. Item 4.2, Board, Commission, and Committee. There are none, or I'm just gonna skip right on by. Go on over there, y'all. Anybody down that row over there? Scott, Todd, Troy, anybody down there tonight?
One thing I want to mention, and this got me thinking from our ribbon cutting over at the King Supers last week, and thank you for those that weren't up at CML and were able to attend, but Joe Kelly, the president of King Supers, mentioned this during his speech. He said that that location was going to have 250 employees that are gonna, were going to work at King Supers itself. So I started thinking, yeah, my, that same look I had Tamara was really. So it just got me thinking, and I went back to our planning, and with a little help from a couple of you who happened to stop by, and thank you, Fred, we started thinking about the different projects and the commercial projects that we've got coming into the city right now, that we're working through the planning and engineering stages of things. So I went and I just started counting them. So I might not have gotten every one of them, because I'm not real scientific, but I got to 28 before I didn't have any others that were easy to find out. So we've got 28 commercial businesses that are moving into the city right now. So we have a lot of business discussions with folks, and really, again, what got me thinking of that is how many jobs are going to be produced by those new businesses coming in? So I think it's pretty easy. If King Supers is 250 by itself, the rest of that King Supers project, both on the east and west side, is gonna be 14. We've got another five that are coming in at South Academy Highlands. And then when you take like Wandelene's right down here, we hope to get all her approvals done this week so she can up early next week. You know, that might be four or five, but when you start adding all those together, we're probably approaching 1,000 jobs that we've got in the pipeline right now that are coming through. So it just got me thinking. I wanted to make sure I just kind of pass that along to you to get you all thinking. And if you ever have any questions or anything else, come see me. The difficult thing is when I talk about those type of numbers, first thing people do when they walk in or they call me and say, okay, what's coming? Is this one coming? Is that one coming? Or they've seen something online? But please understand, with these developers and who we're working with, when people start submitting things to us, it's considered they've got a letter of intent that they will move in there. But it's not really, the relationship isn't done until they open their doors. So we're very hesitant on telling people this is coming and that's coming until they make it official, like King Supers did last week, because we have no control whether they do actually open their doors or not. So I just thought he got us thinking a little bit, and those are some good numbers to throw out there. 28 businesses, oh, she's not here tonight, but I also, she was mentioned at the King Supers opening, and a lot of that credit and a lot of that pat on the back goes to Kimberly Bailey. She really does a ton of work with all of those folks, and she helps, especially with the bigger. We talked to the chamber about how we could help with some of the smaller ones with their help. So we're really trying to initiate some things to help. I can just tell you all, with planning having 52 projects currently, we do not have the staff to hold folks' hands. So there has, there's three or four business, small business advocacy groups out of Colorado Springs, and the city of Fountain is very fertile for somebody to come in and help small businesses and hold their hands through, because we just don't have the staff to do that when people need that. So just some food for thought from all of you. That's all I've got, Mayor.
Well, hats off to your department for the heavy load on the project we did the ribbon cutting on today.
You bet.
And I know a lot, every lot of staff has been involved with that, but you know, your department's done the heavy lifting on that, so.
You bet. Appreciate that.
That's fantastic.
Hopefully, the next two days go as planned.
Your ears, your mouth, or whoever. Okay, anybody else? Okay, Chief?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Good to see everybody this evening. Just a quick, kind of a combo tag team report, follow-up to the email that was sent to the council yesterday afternoon in regards to the fireworks situation. We tried to front-load that email with information for the council pertaining to the ordinance in as layman terms as we could get. The first part of that email was kind of my description of what's legal, what's not, and then followed by the enforcement piece from our police chief. But certainly, if there's any questions on that, if you open the attachment that was with that email, pictures worth a thousand words, those pictures definitely are the best description for what's legal within the city of Fountain for this Fourth of July. All three fireworks distributors within the city of Fountain have been inspected and licensed by the city, by the Fire Marshal's Office, to go ahead and start selling. I think yesterday was kind of their big kickoff day after the inspections were completed. I believe they've all got their inventory, not 100% sure on that, but they are licensed and ready to go, so should be selling only those that are legal. And so barring any questions on that, I'll pass to our police chief for the enforcement piece.
Thank you.
Evening, Mayor, Council. Yes, so per the email, I put at the bottom kind of what our enforcement plan is. It's nothing extraordinary, but we will be out in the neighborhoods monitoring, certainly looking for any unsafe fireworks, and we'll remind our citizens that there's an ordinance in place. Anything that leaves the ground is illegal and cannot be shot off. If it stays on the ground, or you can hold it in your hand, that's legal, and that's all the stuff that's being sold at the distributors here in town. They're not selling anything illegal in town. So we hope for voluntary compliance from our citizens, and we'll enforce it as necessary, and we're gonna have plenty of officers out there monitoring, so we'll kind of play it by ear and see how it goes. Lastly, we will be doing some extra enforcement education at the new intersection down here on Indiana. We've got our speed trailers up. Bob with Streets has his notification of the new signal up out there, so we're gonna be paying attention to the speed and making sure we're getting close to 25 as we can to make sure that people coming up to that intersection are prepared for the change. We'll do that for the next week or so, and again, we'll play that by ear as well to see how people are adjusting to that new intersection. So any questions about the fireworks or anything else?
So the citizen calls in, they're really irritated. Their neighbor's been shooting them up in the air for an hour, right? So they called 911 because they're just tired of these fireworks, right? And the officer comes out to the neighborhood, but everybody's got their hands in their pockets. Gosh darn, nobody saw a thing. Evidence is on the ground. What happens?
That was kind of the scenario last year, repeated over and over and over again, as many times as you can count, to where the calls become unmanageable. We'll get hundreds of calls tomorrow, or I mean, on the Fourth of July, and we won't be able to manage them, and we'll respond where we can, and that's aside from all the other normal calls that we have. And with that many people out and about on the holiday, there will be lots of other police calls and fire calls that we're all gonna be going on. And so obviously, if we have the officers available, we'll send them out to the house, and they'll use their judgment and discretion of what they can figure out, of who shot off the fireworks. But you know, as we knew last year, we were in a neighborhood, and we told people, hey, this is illegal, please don't do it, and we moved on to the next neighborhood a block away, and then they started shooting them off as soon as we left. So it's probably not gonna be much different today, but, I keep saying today, it won't be much different on the Fourth, but we'll do the best we can and kind of see where this goes.
Yeah, I just don't want people to have unrealistic expectations that.
And we always, you know, they can sure call, we don't ever want to tell anybody not to call, but call, and if we can respond, we will.
Okay. All right, Todd, back to you for one last second. So the arms for the railroad crossing are on the ground tonight, today, right?
Yes.
And I think we need to try to, if we can, if anybody's watching, let them know kind of what's gonna happen in the next couple of days.
So the schedule as we speak, and again, this is all controlled by the railroad. No control from us whatsoever, regardless of who I would try to call, and I couldn't reach anybody anyways. The plan is, is that tomorrow they will stage their safety briefing at 6:30. At 7:00 AM, they will start placing those crossing arms into the ground. They have already been up and tested. So they say all the systems are already working, but legally, they have rules that they don't actually physically put them up until the road is actually physically opened. So at 7:00 AM, they're gonna start putting up those arms. That's supposed to go for three hours. At the same time, Native Sons Construction will be on Illinois. So starting tomorrow morning, both Indiana and Illinois will be closed. That's what we've been pushing out on social media. So folks will have to come down and detour to Ohio. It'll be a bad morning tomorrow. Native Sons will be ripping up the actual asphalt on Illinois, and then Jersey Barriers will go in tomorrow, let's say tomorrow afternoon. And what their goal is, is by the rush hour tomorrow being 5 o'clock, is to have Indiana open and Illinois closed. So that right now is what the schedule is, and let's see if it all comes together.
Okay. Oh, you have a question? Okay.
Yeah, Todd, so just quick, are we getting notified on when these turbines, these wind turbines are coming through the city? We had one today that was broken down on a 7-Eleven there. It almost caused a huge accident.
Oh, yeah.
And so, especially with this being shut down and all that stuff there, we don't get any notification when those things are happening?
So kind of the timeline of all that, and the mayor, she, her memory is much better than mine, but she's been hammering CDOT from PPACG and all the CDOT meetings and the same things. So I'm saying we've put a hard push on this for maybe eight months, a year, but basically, what we've learned has happened is CDOT permanently derouted or detoured all of those windmills because of the construction on I-25. So when they opened the southern portion of that, because they still won't be able to get through, or South Academy, where it goes through the real tight sections, when those opened up, we really started hitting them, because I think PD's been out, they've shut down the on-ramp to Mesa Ridge four or five times, where people have, they've not been able to make the turn, they haven't been able to get out there. So CDOT has confirmed with us, they've gotten with us, they've made phone calls. The issue they have continually given back to us the last two or three months since they've opened that southern piece is that they do their permits a year in advance. So all of the different pilot companies, the pilot cars that you see, they get different permits. They're getting their permits right now for next summer. So we asked CDOT to put something out and mass email, let them all know that that's open. Email, or CDOT has assured us, they have, and I trust the guys that have told us they have, but they said they have no control over those individual pilot companies, and it's gonna have to work its way through their permitting system before they can guarantee that all those pilot companies will stop bringing them onto 85, 87. But I think the mayor, we were just talking about it yesterday, and she hit them up at a CDOT meeting last Thursday. I hit up another one of their engineers today, and he said they would send out another, and they would continue to try, but they can't, they don't have any control over the little pilot companies.
Well, my suggestion to CDOT was, and through our commissioner, hopefully, our CDOT commissioner, was they need to stop issuing year-long permits. They need to be six months permit and perhaps reviewed every three months, because there's so much construction going on in the entire state. This is just absolutely ridiculous.
Yeah.
And I was really, really mad the last couple of days when we've had to, they've had to take down the barricades, they've had to stop striping. I mean, I was listening to Robin from Native Sons today, explain everything they've had to do in the last 48 hours, and it's just.
Yesterday, we had two, I think that came through.
They said they counted between yesterday and today a total of 15, between that and the houses.
It came through. Wow.
That came through. So it was very, very disruptive to what they were trying to get done.
You know, I brainstormed this, Mr. Hinton, I think what I'll try to do, they're coming from that windmill factory down south of Pueblo, and I think what I'll do, instead of going to CDOT, I'm pretty confident CDOT's what they can. I think I'm gonna try to call down there. Maybe I'll make a trip down there and bang on some doors for a day and see if we can get somebody from the factory side to, they can notify these pilot companies that they, they're gonna reroute. I don't know. I'll go bang on some doors and see what we can do.
Yeah, just a little heads up, I mean, with a lot of stuff that we have going on, I mean, trying to open up that intersection.
100%.
And another intersection closing, it's just, it just, it did not look good today. And I drove by, and I was like, and I barely saw the little yellow truck that's normally behind them, and I'm like, that's a big wind turbine.
Oh, yes.
It just takes up the whole road.
Yep.
And so just, just concern for the citizens that we have here to make sure everybody's safe.
You got it.
Agree with everything. Agree with everything. All right. Okay. Um, anybody else? John, Mr. Todd.
Yes, Mayor. Good, uh, good afternoon. I just wanted to add, uh, just real quick about the fireworks, back to that for a moment, and just about what we're doing, uh, from a messaging perspective about that. We did put up, um, you know, a Facebook post last week, some of the videos and things that we made, uh, last year, just about fireworks safety and encouraging folks to purchase the fireworks at a legal fireworks stand. We're gonna have some information up on our website here, a banner that also has information just about the ordinance and, and responsible use of fireworks. Uh, another thing we did, and this is the second year we've done this, is, and thanks to PPIR, partnered with them. PPIR is giving us 1,000 printed tickets to their July 6th event. It's their ascent event. It's a three-day event, runs through the Fourth of July weekend. They are giving a thousand tickets away to Fountain residents. Last year, it was a digital thing where you got on and you just did it digitally. This year, they wanted to do it by printed tickets, where you come here to Fountain City Hall and, um, we'll give you, you know, tickets for your family, the, the printed ones. So, it's a really great opportunity. It's a great alternative for folks who wanna see fireworks. They have a fireworks show, they have a drone show. These tickets are actually for the event for the entire day. So, it's general mission for the entire day. So, I just wanted to add that that's gonna be available. Um, I think we were out at the ribbon cutting, so I'm not sure if the tickets got dropped off this afternoon, but once, once I have them in hand, we'll be, you know, blasting that out to everybody. So, you know how to, you know, and when to come get the tickets if you wanna go to that event. So, I just wanted to add that.
Also, Fort Carson is doing, and it's open to the public June 29th, I believe. They're doing theirs too as well.
Their Freedom Fest, right? Is it Freedom?
Yeah, Freedom Fest. That's another option too as well.
Thanks for that reminder, too.
Do, do they want the tickets exclusively, um, given out through City Hall? Um, cause our, our hours really limit on when people get it. I was wondering if maybe, I, I'm just throwing this out there as an idea, cause it's the first I've heard of that, and I don't know if it's possible. Um, if we can maybe work with, um, the farmer's market and maybe have a few out there on Saturday that, um.
Well, the key, Mayor, is that we, they asked us that we control and validate that the tickets are going to Fountain residents only. So, it's gonna be one of those situations where someone's gonna show up and either show their driver's license with their fountain address, or a utilities bill, or something that proves that they're a Fountain resident. Unfortunately, last year, they were very generous to give us the online, you know, ticket, but a lot of folks actually, people took advantage of that. And so, they were trying to, you know, take another approach. So.
Oh, that's, that's a good explanation.
We did agree to just them.
I just wanna make sure we can get them out, you know, and, and.
Yeah. It's a thousand tickets. We think once we get it out there, it'll go pretty fast. So.
Right.
Um, as soon as I pick them up, we'll get it posted and start handing them out.
And is there gonna be a drone event or anything with that, or?
There's a drone show, like last, there's a fireworks program, there's a drone show, and then these are general admission for the entire day. So, folks can go out there and see the drifting and all the racing and all the stuffs.
Okay. Is it one drone show or two drone shows? Cause that got confusing last year. We left after the first one and found out the second one was just as good.
I think it's one drone show. It's a fireworks show and one drone show. I'd have to double check that, but.
Okay. All righty. Cause we were sitting in the parking lot apparently till trying to get out when the second show was going on, so.
Sorry, Mayor, I have one more thing I wanted to add. Lisa reminded me that, uh, an emergency 911 call for just the fireworks being shot off is not something we wanna do. Um, if there's an injury or a fire, that's when we call 911. Other than that, it's a non-emergency number for anything else, um, firework related. I just wanna make sure that, uh, the citizens understand that. Cause we don't wanna tie up the 911 line with my neighbor shooting off fireworks.
No, I get that, but sometimes people, the non-emergency line isn't always manned because they're handling 911 calls, so.
Yeah, but I'd rather have them wait on hold for non-emergency than I would on a 911 caller waiting on hold.
Yes. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
So, let's get that number out there. So.
Yes.
All right.
39, uh, 719-390-5555.
Okay.
I passed that quiz. Thank you.
All right.
And we'll also, uh, we'll put out Lisa's very creative post that she did last year as well, that says kind of how, you know, when to call 911, when not to. So, expect those here very shortly.
All right. Bleeding dead or dying, call 911. Anything else, right? Was that pretty much your post last year, Lisa? Okay. All right, council members on my left. Anything tonight?
A couple things. Um, with regards to the tickets for the, uh, PPIR, um, I know you said the city, uh, needed to control them, but you may wanna consider having them available at the utility department customer service center. Uh, we got a lot of residents going in and out of there, more than are coming to City Hall. Um, easy to verify, uh, whether they're a Fountain resident or not. Uh, so you may wanna consider, uh, putting some of those over there. Um, for, uh, the chiefs, uh, from me to you, uh, with regards to the fireworks, my number one priority is the safety of your people. Okay? Uh, I, I wanna cut down on fireworks. I wanna do, uh, what we need to do, but at the same time, fireworks aren't worth endangering your people's lives. So, please take that into consideration. That's from me, not from the council, but from me. I would appreciate that. Um, I wanna thank everyone who was involved with the King Supers opening. Uh, it was a great event. I wanna thank Councilmember Duncan, Councilmember Hinton, uh, Councilmember Applegate, uh, for coming. And, uh, thank you for everybody on the staff for putting in a lot of hard work on that. Uh, great show by the Indiana opening. Yeah, we didn't have a lot of press there, but we picked the date and that's just the way it is. Uh, and finally, with regard to the pilot companies, a lot of those pilot companies aren't based here in Colorado. Uh, you know, they'll come in from Nebraska, Texas, wherever. Uh, so, a lot of them aren't too concerned about what our laws and what our, uh, rules and regulations are. They're just trying to get the, the, the people through. So, I think Todd's suggestion of talking to the, the people shipping them out, uh, they're more likely to listen to them than they are CDOT. Uh, that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Tamara, get anybody this way, anything tonight?
Mike, okay. I wanna echo the sentiments from, um, Pro Tim Rick about our King Supers opening. Thanks to all the staff, Todd, your staff, and our, um, amazing, um, staff that we have here. Um, so, thank you for that. Our city was in the spotlight, nothing but positive comments that I heard. So, um, Scott, hats off to you. Yes, we have a great team. Um, I'm excited for the election tonight. I hope everyone has exercised their right to vote. Um, I attended the Honor Flight of Southern Colorado, and it is a national organization with a mission of honoring our nation's veterans by bringing them to Washington DC to visit the memorials dedicated to their service and their sacrifice. The Honor Flight takes veterans from World War II, Korea, and Vietnam eras on a three-day, all-expenses-paid trip to our nation's capital. And I thought that was wonderful. And there was one person that I knew that was in the picture, so I was glad to see that, um, uh, to be a part of that. It was, it was really awesome. I also wanna give a huge shout out to our first responders. I've been hearing great things about them. Uh, they're keeping us safe. We have a lot of things that are going on now that it's summertime, uh, Chief. So, please, um, let the, um, men in uniform know that we appreciate them. Um, we have fires that are around our state. I hear that Fountain is out there helping, and I really appreciate, um, again, hearing great things about our team. Um, great to see that our Beacon team is working alongside. Um, I saw the report, reduce send incarcerations and freeing up our officers to help. That's awesome. I'm just grateful to have the incredible team that we have here in Fountain.
All right. Well, if you're sitting at home at 6:23, if you haven't voted, you've still got another 25 minutes to run over there to Utilities Department and get it done, right? All righty. So, um, had a great week at CML, as always, a lot of good classes at CML. Um, and, and some not-so-great ones, right, Troy? But, we, we sat down in the middle when we were two. We just had to tough it out, right? Anyways, but, uh, anyways, it was a good, good event and good time. It's always good to hear what other cities are doing and hear their stories. And then you come back and you go, wow, it's not that bad here. And, uh, man, there's, there's some real stories out there from some other cities. And so, you just, makes you more thankful for what you got going on here. And, um, so I appreciate everybody letting me go to that. And Gordon, I appreciate you doing the King Supers thing, and I hated to miss that. But, um, Todd, if you let them know I love factory tours, so maybe we can get a tour of the, the back before they open up. I always love that kinda stuff. So, um, that's great. So, um, does IT or, um, Joni, do you have anything?
Nothing. Thank you.
All right. And for people who want ballots counted by hand, Joni would be a person to talk to because it's CML. She, for the past several years, has been on the Hand Ballot Counting Committee. And you get a little ballot of like four separate offices, and you elect out this year, cause you only had one person running for one of the offices. But some of the other offices, you get like four people running for three spots and all that. And it can take them like an hour and a half just to count, um, those 100 votes. So.
I would not suggest hand voting for any type of election ever. And even if there's one person in that category, we still had to count them and double-check that count for that one person. So.
Right. So, yeah, if you wanna see the, the pain of a very small election, right? And thank you to everybody who run for those positions. All righty. Okay, that takes us on to public to be heard. Citizens may address the council on items that are not on the agenda. Council may not be able to provide an immediate answer, but will direct staff to follow up. Out of respect for the council and others in attendance, please limit your comments to five minutes or less. I do have one card tonight, so if there's anybody else that wanted to say anything tonight, please fill out a card really quick and get it up. She's shaking her head, no. Okay. All right. So, I have Steve, if you'd like to come down and state your name for the record. And, um. There you go.
The fact that you just called me by first name means I've been up here too many times. Steve RC?
No, it honestly means I, I don't, I, Tamara's told me a hundred times how to pronounce your last name, but every time, it's RC.
RC, just like the cola.
Okay, RC. I would've had it tonight, but I, I didn't wanna mess it up.
So, um, interestingly enough, when I dropped off my card, uh, and the subject was June events, um, she'd asked me, she's like, did you mean July events? And I said, no, June events. It'll make sense once I get, once I start talking. So, June has come and gone. Um, as you know, June is traditionally LGBT Pride Month. Uh, it has been recognized so far in Colorado with Denver Pride this past weekend, Colorado Springs Pride a few weekends ago, down in Lamar this weekend, will be Southeast Colorado Pride. And the reason that this is important to me right now is, uh, for a couple of things. Um, I have been out for many, many years, and it's never been a thing for me. Um, I, 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 uh, help people when I can, um, when I have difficulty when trying to decide whether or not they should come out and why. Um, one of the things that I noticed particularly about this year, and, and I'm not gonna call people out individually, but, um, you'll, you'll see where it's coming from. Uh, so, this year, when I was on Facebook and I said, hey, um, uh, Colorado Springs Pride, I'm gonna attend, and marked a little attends. And of course, then you get notified on all the different comments that come up, you know, your event's getting popular, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, the, the comments that I saw this year were probably some of the most hateful that I have seen in the 14 years that I've been back here in Colorado. And I think that this is a leadership issue. Presently, when we look at just El Paso County, El Paso County has approximately about 141,000 registered Republicans in El Paso County. Now, why is that important? Because day one of June, the GOP leadership for this state started off with, and this comes from screenshots from that GOP leader's Twitter ac, well, not Twitter, X account, right? Very straightforward. Burn all the, burn all the pride flags this June. God hates pride. God hates fags. That particular language is very reminiscent of some of the more fringe groups that we have seen out of this country. But, the one thing that really stood out, and I did a lot of hefty research over the last two weeks, scrolling through people's social media, scrolling through, and by people, I mean leadership within my community, scrolling through the leadership, social media, Facebook, city council, and don't get me wrong, when Club Q happened, and I just want you to know, I actually, I only go to, I, when Club Q was open, I would only go like maybe twice a year. It just so happened that that particular night, I was gonna go. And then I went, eh, I'm too old for that, and I didn't go. A lot of my friends did. And Fountain stood up. You stood up immediately, far sooner than some of our, uh, federal, uh, representatives did as far as denouncing this. But why hasn't anybody, why hasn't anybody that sends me flyers that says, hey, I'm a candidate for the Conservative Party, for the Republican Party, why haven't you stepped forward and denounced this? Why haven't we, as an all-American city, in line with our mission statement, said, this is not us? Going by the most meager of statistics, at least 3,000 of your constituents are members of the LGBT community. Do we want them to feel welcome? Or do we want them to know, to be able to look at your affiliation and be like, man, does this much of the city council hate me? Because this is what their leadership is saying. Don't get me wrong, I was complicit for years. I was a registered Republican for 20 years of my life before I realized I can't change that from within. And now I'm independent. And so, if we're not speaking out against the wrongs, are we in support of them? Even partially? And is the, is the perception that we support them? That's why, more than anything else, I apologize for running over, this is, is as important this year as it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. And we've been advised, just to let you know, by our city attorney, to not do city positions on our personal Facebook pages, right? Is that correct, Troy? Not take city positions and city business onto our personal Facebook pages, but if we do have a candidate page, that's the place to handle it. I gave that man as much attention as I felt he deserved, which is absolutely zero in my private page. So, um, I did not want to give him any attention for it.
I, I understand, and I understand that.
Right.
I'm just saying, as vocal as they are, we need to say, this is not us.
Thank you. Troy, did you wanna address anything?
No, I think, I think that, I mean, um, I think you can make political statements, um, but I think as long as you're not representing the, the.
Right.
Organizational, uh, uh, you know, mission or anything like that. So, as long as you're not speaking for the organization on those types of political.
Yeah. Thank you so much for sharing. I appreciate it. All right. That was the only card I had tonight. Um, that takes us on to the consent agenda, item seven. All items listed on the consent agenda are considered routine and will be approved with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which case the item may be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately at the discretion of council. Um, we have one item on the consent agenda, item 7A, approval of the June 11th, 2024 city council meeting minutes. What would Council, Councilmember Rick?
Move to approve the June 11th, 2024 city council meeting minutes.
Okay, Councilmember Duncan?
I second.
We have a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Six yes. Motion carry.
Okay, that takes us on to item eight, old business, there is none. Item nine, new business, 9A, consideration of items removed from the consent agenda, there were none. Item 9B, ordinance number 1800, an emergency ordinance repealing and reordaining section 050, open carrying of firearms of chapter 32, dangerous weapons, within title nine, public peace morals and welfare of the Fountain Municipal Code regarding firearms in city facilities.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you, Council. Uh, this is, uh, this is, comes to the council as an emergency ordinance because as the council is aware, and was, uh, discussed at a, a previous meeting. council is aware, and was, uh, discussed at a, a previous meeting, that the, uh, the legislature and the governor signed into, into law, uh, Senate Bill 24-131, uh, titled that, the Sensitive Spaces Bill, um, that goes into effect January 1 of this year, that, uh, that mandates that no firearms should be allowed in, uh, government facilities, um, that, uh, that hold public meetings like City Hall. So it would really, as applied to us, um, uh, just be City Hall. Um, and, uh, they, they, so they kinda forced our hands, um, with a, 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 a city like us that relies on the Second Amendment, um, and, and so in order to keep as much of the status quo as we can, this emergency ordinance, um, is, is being proposed, uh, for, to last no longer than 90 days, um, while we implement a formal permanent ordinance, um, that reflects a similar, maybe even the exact same idea, which is to allow, to opt out of a certain portion of that bill, which would allow, um, uh, people to carry firearms within City Hall, um, with the exception of while court is in session. Uh, and that's a specific carve-out in the bill, uh, and, uh, and, um, and so that's the way that the emergency ordinance is written, and, and, um, and so that, that will allow us to come January 1st, now without two readings, um, you know, continue as much of that status quo as, as kind of was the direction, and I think from council, as we can, the, the one exception being, um, no one will be allowed to carry during the times that municipal court is in session. And I'll leave it with that, um, with the, with the kind of acknowledgement that, that, um, we will need to, um, come forward within the next 90 days, and I think, I think the plan is at the end of July, early August, for a first and second reading for a permanent ordinance. So this is just kind of a stopgap until that time.
Okay, Councilmember Rick?
Okay, uh, Troy, maybe I misunderstood, maybe I misheard.
Yeah.
I was under the impression we needed an emergency ordinance because the state bill that passed went into effect in July 1st, but I thought you said it went into effect January 1st.
I, I might have misspoke, it goes into effect July 1st.
Okay.
You are correct.
That's...
So my, my apologies if I said January. So, yeah, in, in a few days.
Okay.
Yeah, good clarification, we wouldn't need an emergency if it was January.
My apologies, yeah.
That's okay.
July 1st, yep.
Just wanted to make sure.
No, that's a, yeah, good, okay, any other questions up here? Okay, any questions from in the audience? Okay, seeing none, what would council like to do with this? Councilmember Duncan?
I move to approve ordinance 1800.
Councilmember Hinton?
Second.
Okay, is there any, we have a motion in a second, is there any further deliberation up here? Seeing none, please vote.
Six yes, motion carried.
All right, thank you, Troy.
Thank you.
All right, item 10, uh, city council agenda requests. Does anyone up here have any, uh, agenda requests? Councilmember Duncan, do you have a, any of your agenda requests? Okay, alrighty. Okay, alrighty. Takes us on to item 11, announcement of an executive session.
In accordance with the city charter and the Colorado Open Meetings Act, the city council open session is to determine whether it will hold a closed executive session. A closed executive session may be held upon an affirmative vote of two-thirds of the quorum present. If consent to the closed executive session is not given, the items may be discussed in open session or withdrawn from the consideration. The purpose of the executive session this evening is pursuant to CRS Section 24-6-4024 for the purpose of reviewing approval of the amendment of executive minutes, and CRS Section 24-6-4024E for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, and/or instructing negotiators for pending litigation.
Okay, we have a request from our city clerk to go into executive session, uh, what would council like to do? Councilmember Rick?
Move to go into executive session.
Councilmember Hersberg?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Please vote.
One second.
We don't have a voting screen yet?
Yeah.
Okay.
My screen was stuck, sorry.
That's okay.
There you go.
I'm by hand.
(laughing).
Six yes, motion carried.
All right, thank you very much. And this meeting is adjourned, we'll take a five-minute break, uh, before we go into executive session. Troy, it's gonna be the shortest executive session on record, huh? All right.